Welcome and good evening. I would like to call the Monday, January 27th, 2025 School Board Meeting to Order. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Director Weber.
Here.
W Felton.
Here.
Claflin.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Duffy.
Here.
Chair Human.
Here.
That's six present.
All right. And I ask all who are able to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, welcome. We've got a great group. I'm excited to hear from the middle school. But at this time, I'd really like to welcome our two newest members to the board, Ryan Duffy and Paul Cummings. I'm really excited about the work that we're going to engage in over the next two years. And I'd like to say how impressed I am already with how much effort Paul and Ryan have put in with trainings through MSBA to get to this point so that they're ready to just hit the ground running. So I just want to thank you guys for taking us seriously. And now we'll get down to business. All right. First up is the approval of our meeting agenda and minutes. So I am looking for a motion to approve the regular board meeting agenda for this evening as well as the minutes for the following. November 25th, 2024 work session. December 2nd, 2024 special meeting. The December 9th, 2024 work session and regular business meeting. And January 13th, 2025 work session and special business meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
Chair Human, do we need to remove an item from the agenda?
I don't think so.
No, we did make the change before the meeting started.
Fantastic. And I'd like to just mention why we have so many minutes on here is because we didn't have a second meeting in December because of the holiday break. So it just kind of all stacks up. So, all right. If we have any other discussion on that, I'm looking for all in favor to approve these. Please say aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Motion carries to approve minutes and agenda. All right. The best part, quality in action. The school board is excited to welcome Leah Borg, middle school principal. And we'll be hearing about Goal Getters.
Yeah, thank you so much for having us. You can see that we brought a huge crew with us today, more than typical, because so many students are so very interested in this new program that we have. I am not going to be here long with you. I'm going to actually put our staff and students in front of you so that they can tell you about the experiences. But Goal Getters was a program that we started last year at the middle school. And we partner with Jarrell Miller, who's the owner and operator of the company Goal Getters. And you'll get to learn a little bit about that. And then Shannon Smith is one of the school counselors that we have at the middle school. She's going to be here to tell you a little bit about the program and how she schedules students in the data collection that we have around showing us if that program is working, and it is. And then Tessa Walker, who's one of the interns from the U of M School Psych Team, is with us as well. And so I know we have a lot of kids with us. We have five that have planned speaking roles with you. And then the rest of the students are here to answer questions as needed. And so I would like to call them up to the microphone.
Awesome.
Hey, good evening. First off, thank you for having us. I'm Jarrell Miller. I'm the founder of the organization called Goal Getters Academy. The mission of this program is to empower teams to overcome challenges, establish themselves as thinkers, entrepreneurs, and leaders of productive members of society. We started this, we contracted with South St. Paul Middle School last spring. We've seen that it was a need to come in and just help students build relationships and kind of keep the momentum going. And that's when I kind of, it was a family friend, LeAnn Wise. She kind of introduced the connection and brought me into this family, to this school. It's been great. It's been great to see the students here. I definitely give a huge support and shout out to them and respect for them, the courage that they're here to talk amongst you all. It takes a lot of courage to do that. So I really want to give a special shout out and a special thank you to the students behind me. Pretty much let them do all the talking, pretty much about what's going on. Next, I'll pass it over to Ms. Smith and she can introduce the students. Thank you.
Before we introduce the students, my name is Shannon Smith, and I'm the eighth grade counselor. And I've had the privilege of working alongside Jarrell Miller with our Goal Getters program that started last spring. And so just a little bit about the history of the Goal Getters Academy. Last year, it was funded by the South St. Paul Education Foundation. And we had approximately, I think it was 60 students. We'll get to that in a later slide. But we had three days that were allotted for Mr. Miller and the groups. And there were about seven to eight students per session. And we ended up having a small amount of sessions before the end of the year. We didn't get it up and running until about April. And so it was seventh and eighth graders that attended last year. So that's a little bit of that history. And then the funding for this year is through the ANI Plan. And that's how it's funded through this year. And it's for two days a week. And so we've been able to increase the number of students that are participating, even though we've decreased the number of days that are available for us. And so that's where the funding is coming from this year. Here's some of our impact data. Last spring, we had 62 students that participated. And with the data that we did pre and post, we did baseline data based on attendance, tardiness, no credits, or NCs, and academic performance. We had 71% of the students that decreased the number of tardies from quarter three to quarter four. And this was only about seven sessions with Mr. Miller. And so that was really helpful. And then we also had a 61% decrease or maintain of the current grades for the students of those 31 seventh graders. And if we look ahead to eighth grade, we also had 31 students that participated. 87% of them decreased their number of tardies from quarter three through quarter four. But that's pretty phenomenal, being that at springtime, they're eighth grade and they're looking ahead to ninth grade. And so the fact that they were able to decrease 87% was pretty remarkable. And then 70% of the students either decreased their number of NCs or maintained where they were, not necessarily NCs, just in terms of grades. So that's the spring data. And then if we look ahead to the data from right now that we just polled live, we have 79 students in our groups right now. And we have all grades, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. We have 13 different groups, and each of the groups roughly has about six to nine students in them, give or take. Mr. Miller also does some one-on-one with a couple of students as well. And we've had 11 sessions so far this year. So in these 11 sessions, keep that in mind, we've had 40% of our eighth graders that have reduced their number of tardies at this point of the year. And we've had 72% that have demonstrated consistent academic progress and 33% that have improved their progress just since the beginning of the year. We started this program about beginning of October, second week of October. So that's eighth grade data. If we move ahead to seventh grade data, again, they've had 11 sessions as well. Half of the students reduced their number of tardies in seventh grade. And 81% of those 22 students were consistent. And another 31% improved their academic progress, decreasing their number of NCs. And then sixth grade. This was our first year with sixth grade. So it's been a little interesting knowing how sixth graders will do in a small group. Sometimes we don't know. And so with, we have 21 that are in our groups now. We had 28% of them reduce their number of tardies. And then we also had 57% of those 21 students were consistent. And 23% actually improved their academic progress. So that's our sixth grade data. And then just overall, again, we have 79 students right now. 40% have reduced their number of tardies to class since the beginning of the year. And then 92% of them have been consistent with 30% improving in those number of NCs in their classes. So now we get to hear the real stories and the real faces that are behind all of this data. We have six speakers. One is a returner from last year, Marley. And then we also have Beebe, Marcy, and we have TK, Kylie, and Oliver. So I'm going to ask first, I'm going to ask Marcy, and I'm going to ask Beebe to come on up.
Hi.
Hi.
Nice.
Can I bring this down?
Yeah.
Okay. So, do I just say? Okay. So Goal Getters has been a safe place where I can go. We can all express ourselves in our own way. We all feel connected and accepted. I have learned how to communicate about things that matter and things that are important to me. Goal Getters gives me courage to speak up about what's going on around the world, things happening at school, and how things can impact you. It allows me a space to let it out, hear other opinions, and learn from others. I feel empathy for others when they speak about things that bother them. I can share my opinions without anyone feeling mad or upset and hearing me out. And that's why Goal Getters is a good place for everyone to feel safe and accepted.
Thank you.
Okay. So the group is a safe place that helped me control my emotions and explore my feelings. I have gone to know people better. Mr. Miller has been through some things that I have been through. So whenever I need advice, I go to him. This group has helped me express myself, and I have learned to use my voice more.
Thank you. Thank you.
Goal Getters is a place where I can express myself, and I get to hang out with my friends. And I just get to have the opportunity to express myself and how I feel and how other people feel.
I'm Kylie. And I get to hang out with others who maybe I don't have class with. It helps we get to know them better and also meet new people. Mr. Miller helps us by explaining to us how certain things work. He also listens to us and teaches us how to self-assess ourselves. Mr. Miller is a really good person.
I'm Takari, and this group has taught me to be calm and create more friends. I've learned a lot of social skills. And the group has been a safe place where my voice can be heard. And Mr. Miller is a very nice person, you know? He feeds me with knowledge and food. That's it.
Hi, my name's Marley. And Goal Getters is a group where we are getting to express our feelings with a safe community that we created. Goal Getters is a place where we can learn how to control ourselves in an environment that could be hard to be in. It also helps to communicate with each other, just to know how we feel.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you to all of them. It's such awesome public speaking experience, which we know is so important in all grades of middle school, especially eighth graders going into ninth grade. As we move forward, a couple things. You have some different testimonials in front of you. You have copies of them. We also have those on the slideshow as well. And so we were able to create some opportunities to get voice from some of our members that aren't here tonight. And so you'll see some different testimonials from eighth grade, seventh grade, and a couple sixth graders. And so that is very important. We also have a couple photos in our slideshow. I think they've been working on vision boards this past two weeks. They were going to show them, but many of them aren't done with them yet. So we hope to display them somewhere in our space in the secondary school. And so that's one of the things they've been working on. And then I think there's one more slide of our end of the year pizza party. These are some of our current ninth graders that were in our program last year. And so our eighth graders this year, we have 17 out of our eighth graders of 36 that actually were in the program last year. So we have 17 returners, which is really nice for our students. One more picture of our ninth graders? I'm sure the girls would love this picture with.
My daughters would kill me.
So this ends up, the end of the presentation. Again, thank you all for your time, allowing us to come.
How were the students selected or recruited into these small groups?
So we worked collectively, Ms. Smith will come in and help me out. So I work collectively with Ms. Smith and the counselors there. And they identify the students by their protocol in the school system to pick out what students identify for the groups. Ms. Smith can, she's a school official, so she'll be able to discuss the school language on that.
We use different factors. We use tardies. And with our campus data, we use behavior. We use academic data. And we also use MySavers. And Ms. Tessa can talk a little bit about the MySaver screening that we do with all of our students and what that is measuring. And then we also use anecdotal information, you know, that is associated with ACES and different family input, teacher input, counselor input, administrative input. And it's tricky. It's tricky because we know that this program works for all students. But we also know that we don't have Mr. Miller here more than two days a week. And so we are always striving to hopefully get him here for longer periods of time so we can impact even more students. So, great question.
How do you form the groups? I mean, if there are six to nine kids in those groups, are you putting common experiences together or just availability for what class you're pulling them out of? Or?
Sure. Great question. So interestingly enough, even in middle school, we allow the students, we kind of group them based on who some of their peer influences are, positive peer influences. And what we will do is we may put a group of like two or three students together with another group of two or three that are friends. And then we monitor that. And sometimes, yes, we have to swap groups around because as we know, social pressures kind of go up and down in middle school. But for the most part, students do a really good job, kind of self-selecting, once we do a skeleton of the groups on who they're with. And before we start, we actually have them eyeball the group to make sure it is a safe space for everybody in the group.
And it's also, and it's also too, the reason we do that too is collectively as a team, they work together as a team. They know each other and they help each other for their success in school, their progress in school, their growth.
Quite a few of the kids mentioned that it was a safe place to share and to talk about the news. Can you kind of walk us through how the group meets? Or do you have a topic that you lead them in or how the structure works?
Yeah, so I have, it's like a 56-week session curriculum that I developed for the business that, and it talks about peer anxiety, social anxiety. It talks about, they do vision boards to manifest, as you know, manifesting believing the vision on, you know, where they want to be professional athletes, doctors, lawyers. They have to believe it. They have to believe in themselves that it happened. So we do the vision boards. That's like one thing they really love to do to manifest that. And I mean, at the end of the year, we give them a vision board to see which goals they can knock out, which goals they accomplish, or also them roll into the next school year or the ninth grade as well. So it's a lot of sessions that we talk about, also coping with anger, coping with emotions, coping with feelings and that type of thing.
Are there any other questions from the board? Thank you so much for coming tonight. And what an amazing program.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Dr. Zambrino, I will turn it to you next. Unless there's anything else.
Yeah, Leah, did you have something? You were coming up to the front. I don't want to, I don't want to.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to thank Shannon and Tessa and Jarrell. They really ran with this presentation, getting the students ready. And then they wanted to open it up to as many students as they wanted to experience the school board meeting. And so all of these students here met at the school at about quarter to five. They had pizza. And then they walked down with Tessa and Jarrell and Shannon. And it's been a really nice evening of kids kind of getting ready and even learning about what a school board does and what's happening at this meeting. And so I just can't thank those staff members enough. And I also just really appreciate Jarrell's really communicative with our staff, making sure that he's helping students be successful in their classrooms and really collaborating with all of the student support team, but the teachers as well. And so I just, I can't speak highly enough of his company. And I also don't want to tell all of my other administrators because I don't want him off of our schedule. I just really am glad that he works with our students. So, thank you.
Thank you, Leah. All right.
All right. I will jump in. I will just say, yeah, what a powerful thing to have these kids here. I will let them make their way out. We always let the kids get back to their lives while they're coming to be in our space. So thank you all. Thanks for coming. It's so cool to see the way they're supporting each other and showing up en masse. So I know the board hears me say all the time, we have the best kids. And there you go. Like, I don't, I don't even need to say anything at that, do I?
And come back anytime.
Yeah. Yeah, and that was fun because we did some things to kind of get some support into the school last year. And this just kind of came out as an aside from LeAnn Wise, who actually I worked with in Richfield as a principal. So she had that great connection, and we got lucky to have it land here. So, well, we are also lucky to have a great new board chair in Kim Human. And I'm excited with our whole new board. I see Paul down there and Monica clapping. So Monica, congratulations again and welcoming Paul and Ryan on the board. But what, one of the things that I really love about our board and where we are right now is the commitment and the professionalism around the work. And so a lot of people don't see the work of the board, so I think sometimes it's hard to know. And it's complex stuff. It's policy, it's finance. I mean, these things take a lot to learn. And really, the best tool or mechanism for learning that is through our professional association called the Minnesota School Boards Association. So for those who aren't familiar, the MSBA, as we call them, provides training opportunities for lots of people, but especially obviously for our school board. And they have an introductory set of, they have phases of learning. There are four phases. And we do expect that everybody does phase one and phase two, so they really learn, like, what does it mean to be on a school board in phase one? And then, you know, the financial piece that's so complex is another one. But I love that our board is committed to going, you know, further with that. Now, Director W Felton, as we call, I know T Felton's not here, but has been a strong champion of participation at AMSD. And actually, we were just at the conference last week, and our principal there, who was just here, Leah Borg, was presenting on cell phones and getting cell phones under control. But one of the things that I love, one of the leader standards I love the most is modeling excellence. And we're thrilled to have Kim at the helm modeling excellence. And so Kim received a certificate for completing all four phases of the Learning to Lead Workshop Series. And so you get a certificate. And we just thought it was really important to call that out because not all board members in all places share that commitment. And this board is committed to professional learning and growth. And I think that says a lot because we're here responsible for all these kids. So congratulations, Kim, and thank you for modeling that. And you get the beautiful MSBA certificate. We did talk at our work session, if you pass that down. We did talk at the work session also about, there are, it's interesting how MSBA is structured. They give you points for participation. That's a good way to track who's training. And I think I heard a pretty much a good commitment out of this group about wanting to get on some of those special awards where everybody's done those trainings. So we know that takes time, but Ryan was at the conference last week, and I know Paul's been doing the trainings as well. So just shout out to our new chair and everyone on the board for leaning in on that work. It helps me a lot because I sure do not have all the answers. So the more good minds we have, the better the work will be. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for all you're doing.
Okay, enough of that.
Yeah. You sure you don't want more attention? I mean.
It's time to shift to the reports listed on our agenda. First, we will start with stakeholder comments to the board highlights. As a reminder to the community, there are two ways to make comment to the board. You may either submit an online form through the district website or appear in person to the board. If you would like to speak in person, the board has set aside time at our regular work session, the second Monday of each month, at 6:30 PM. So people are welcome to do that. We do ask that you register online ahead of time, if possible, to make sure that we plot an appropriate amount of time. But as I said, we had comments on January 13th. We had three individuals attend. We had someone come to support. At first, we had someone come to speak with concerns regarding the Amaze Works curriculum in our schools. We had a second person who came to support the Amaze Works curriculum in our schools. And we had a third person come who spoke to a greater need for South St. Paul programming across the city to work together for the betterment of our kids. So it was great to have the opportunity to hear from the public and to have the ear of the entire board. Now, I will turn things over to Vice Chair Claflin for an update on this evening's work session.
Thanks. And besides this evening's work session, I'll cast our memories back a couple of weeks to the 13th, where we had a work session as well. It was an organizational meeting for the board, welcoming in our new members. We swore them in as members of our school board, and we discussed the committees and all of the other work that we divide up among ourselves. And our student reps gave us a preview of what they'll talk about tonight, later on. And then before this business meeting at our work session, we also discussed the upcoming agenda, the policies that we'll be reviewing later, how we go through that process of discussion, hearing them multiple times, and having the opportunity to discuss amongst ourselves, as well as a number of events that are coming up. Scheduling a board retreat for ourselves to really build a team amongst ourselves and build those norms. And I think that's about it. We had a number of updates from committees, but we're just getting started with the new year.
Thank you. All right, we'll go back to Dr. Zambrino. You're next on the agenda with our highlights from the district.
Okay, well, thank you, Chair Human. Well, as we said, we did have a meeting earlier, but I do want to say this is our first meeting of the year on camera. So happy new year to our incredible students, families, staff, the wonderful South St. Paul community. Really, you know, we were joking as we were walking across from the work session to hear about, we live in a lot of different years as a school system. We have a school year, we have a calendar year, fiscal year, all those things. So I'm going to focus on the calendar year, since we just put a pin in 2024. Like, what an amazing year we've had. And then the first half of the school year, just like, it's amazing the things that are happening in our classrooms, our hallways, and of course, beyond with all the activities, athletics, and things that our amazing staff and other volunteers help make happen. So I'm very excited about that. As I said, excited to have new board members joining with us as we come into the new year. And then this week is, we're celebrating Peer Professional Appreciation Week, or ESPs, Education Support Professionals. So just want to give a shout out to our ESPs. I often say they are kind of that glue that sometimes holds it all together. So thank you for what you do for all of us. As far as updates, like we said, we've got great new board members coming on. So with Paul and Ryan jumping in and Monica continuing, it puts us in a really good spot with a mix of some good experience and some good new eyes. Like, it's great to have new perspectives and very excited about that. As we roll forward here, it's like this is where we start talking. I think I put in my Friday up to the board, this is the time of year where a lot of us are just constantly looking down the line, down the line, because we're just at that transition point. So tomorrow and Wednesday, we're so excited to have kindergarten kickoff. A lot of work behind the scenes going on with our principals and our liaisons and other staff who are going to support that event. Both of those are at 6 o'clock, and we did do those on separate nights so we can have more staff available to support families with language needs or other kind of technical advice or things they might need. So kind of trying something new there, which I appreciate the flexibility of our team to be available that way. It's not always easy to roll from one night to the next of the night, but our staff always go above and beyond. So thank you to everyone who's prepared for that. If you're looking for information, you can hop on our website and look at enroll and kindergarten in particular. I know we do have some preschool open houses coming up and some other things. And we're working on transition supports for elementary to middle, middle to high. So lots of great work happening. And how much do you love that picture? Welcome to the Little Packers. This is so fun. We started this year, and we are going to continue this tradition because it is so stinking cute. I'm sorry, I don't know a better way to say it. When you like to see these little kinders all lined up in their shirts and just the pride of being a Packer. We know, we always say, once a Packer, always a Packer. So great to start that with them young. So looking forward to seeing people at the kindergarten kickoff. As I said, the preschool open house right around the corner. We did have to shift that a little bit, so I apologize for any inconvenience that may have caused. The initial one was on the day that it was like 30 to 40 below wind chill. So apologize that we had to move away, pivot there, but appreciate the flexibility. I think that one was a little easier because snow is hard because it really depends on where you are. When it's 35 below, it's 35 below just about everywhere. So that was a little easier than we've had in the past. But excited to welcome in our preschool. We see time and time again the value of that pre-K learning, that preschool learning, the school readiness, and just how the kids are able to make that easier transition to kindergarten. They just jump right in. They know what they're doing. And really. jump right in. They know what they're doing. And really want to give a shout out even to our preschool staff. They really, under Jean and Kristen and Amy Winters' leadership, Jean Zender and Kristen San Martano Weeks, they're really just cranking up the professional development for them. So, they've been implementing the literacy curriculum, getting professional development and classroom management strategies appropriate for that age group. So, they are like really leaning in, and it's been fun to see them like, had just a parking lot conversation with one of the pre-K teachers who's like, thank you. This is so great that we're, I don't, just a give credit thing. I didn't plan those sessions. So, shout out to our leadership that's supporting them as well. So, really great collaborative learning going on there. So, some Packer pride in action. We had a legislative visit. Appreciate Senator Klein and Representative Hanson coming to the secondary building. So, Chuck Ochaki is pretty well connected in what's called the Minnesota Association of Secondary School Principals, and they had a call to say, hey, let's get the legislators into the building, which is something I always like to see happen. And so, it was appreciative that Principal Ochaki got them in. I had a chance to visit with them and talk about a number of things, but they got to do the tour, and then, you know, they figured if we're going to come, let's make it meaningful. So, then visited a high school civics and economic class, talk about their role in government and, you know, give our kids a chance to see what, you know, what they're living with, dealing with. I don't think they probably talked about everything that's happening at the Capitol right now. Probably not modeling excellence yet, but we'll get there. But really fun. And I did have a chance to talk to Representative Hanson when he was there, and he talked about his own experience with the school, and he said, wow, like, wow, is this going like incredibly well. And he didn't say it was bad when his son was there, but he just said, you can tell the difference that the kids have really bounced back from the pandemic, and it's just feeling so good in the building. And that was one of his observations as well. So, excited to have them come. Thank you for that visit. Thanks to Principal Ochaki for hosting that. I unfortunately was sick, so I did not get to see this. This is one of the best events we have. A couple of times during the year, or once a year at least, we'll see this. I've seen it a couple of times in the past, I should say. But the Tri-District CAPS Entrepreneur Kids, they do a Shark Tank style. So, they come up with a plan, a business plan, and then they present it in a Shark Tank-style presentation. And then whoever does the best has an opportunity to earn a $500 grant to get seed money to start their business. And I mean, the ideas these young men and women have come up with, I'll call them that because their ideas show that they are really cool. So, Xander here won a scholarship for developing a hockey scoreboard app. So, like I said, I didn't get there, so I'm excited to see it. So, I got to follow up and see. Mr. Gustil invited me to that, and we'll make sure to get you guys those invites in the future as well. But super, super fun. And that's in partnership with Rev Academy. So, we have that partnership that we've had for a long time. So, thank you to Rev Academy for hosting that. And then, we also had some students in the business and entrepreneurship pitched their idea for a scholarship. So, six business ideas were pitched from seven students, and the winner was Michael with his Stealth Hunt. So, redesigning a archery bag. And I'm going to own, I loved shooting bow and arrow when I was a kid. I think I was okay at it, but I don't know anything about what goes into that bag. So, here's a young man who's seeing a need for a product that wasn't there and is now bringing it to bear. So, really excited that the kids are able to do that. So, this one has like multiple bags combined into one, so you can hold arrows and things that, you know, you just couldn't do otherwise. So, shout out there as well. So, really cool event. And again, shout out to Mr. Gustilo and everyone in that Tri-District CAPS for making that happen. One thing that is so great about our district is just how inclusive the spirit is. And so, a lot of people don't necessarily know. So, we talk, sometimes we certainly talk about it at our committee updates, our partnership with Intermediate District 917. And so, for those who don't know, when you're a small district, it's difficult to offer specialized services for students whose disabilities or needs go beyond what we can serve, or if there's just one student, we don't have the scale to meet their needs. And so, then we belong to a partnership or a consortium that is Intermediate 917. And they have programs throughout the metro or Dakota County, really, because it's mostly Dakota County districts. And then, some of them are housed in other of the member districts, like we are a member district. And really fun that we have that partnership with them, and they have a Deaf Heart of Hearing program at Lincoln Center. And it's really cool because you wouldn't really know that 917 is another district because they're just not treated that way in the building. And so, these kids are in all the classes. Like, I love when I go to read, I always have to remember to put on the microphone because there's someone with hearing needs and different. You wouldn't even, it's so seamless when you're with the kids. But what's so great is years ago, their teachers came up with a way to recognize our teachers for being so inclusive of the kids in their classrooms. And so, we did get, I got to join that this year with Drew Johnson and Kristen Spangers at Lincoln. Super fun. The kids get so excited to see their kids getting an award, and it's just a really emotional event. Drew had some amazing words they all did, but just talking to the kids about really it's their award, not his, which is again, like, talking about modeling excellence. This is, you know, it's his award, let's be frank. But he said, no, 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 there's no way I could have an inclusive classroom without you guys making that happen. And then, Amy Peabody got that down at Capoja. So, just a shout out to all of our teachers, really, because it's like, I always say, when you pick three out of a basket of 300 amazing educators, that's, you know, it's hard to get everybody. But appreciate 917 calling out and recognizing our teachers for that. Last couple of years, we've been building a really nice new partnership, a renewed, maybe I'll call it, with Youth Frontiers. So, they do a lot of different types of retreats. I've done them with my staff when I was a principal and then with students as well. I know we've heard from the middle school, they did the retreats, and I, Lincoln Center had done one, Capoja as well here. So, the fifth graders at Capoja participated in a kindness retreat. So, Youth Frontier is a nonprofit organization that, you know, costs a little bit of money, but we've had great support from like educational foundations for supporting these. So, the kids go into a retreat-style event, and they get to talk about like what's working well, what's not in your school community. They set new norms, and they agree to them. And then, that way, it's a co-created opportunity for them to say, this is the school we want to be and rooted in kindness. We were talking about the MSBA conference ending in, you know, leading with love. And so, we see that with our own kids, leading with love right there in their own building. So, very excited. And then, our Strategic Plan Steering Committee. We've been moving that work down the line, so the board will be getting, I've been giving you all updates, but we are, this is really one of these things, like I've been clear with this committee, it is not my strategic plan. We need a new strategic plan, but it is ours. It's all of ours. Ultimately, you all as a board will approve that. But we have had the best conversations about our district, about what it means to be a Packer, where we've been, where we are, and where we want to be. We had collected stakeholder feedback from students, from families, from staff. I mentioned before, we had the session with our city council members and the mayor and some of the city staff. So, lots of voices that went into gathering the data. And now, we have this steering committee to help us pull it together and identify pillars that are going to hold up our work for the next five years. So, our hope is to get that back in March, maybe looking April, just because with calendars and the way weather and things happen, it may, may not be till April, but we'll get that in front of you all. And obviously, then you all can weigh in on if there's things you think we should add or tweak and adjust. And then, once that's adopted, what's great about that is it sets a vision for us, and then we're going to move into creating metrics of how we're going to measure, are we meeting our goals. And so, I'm very excited about this because understandably, during the pandemic, this type of work dropped away and coming in, you know, it's hard to say, here's where we're going when we don't have a strategic roadmap. And so, excited to have that strategic roadmap coming here before our board in the next few months. And thank you to that committee. I mean, I'm telling you, the group is great. Like, the first meeting we had, there were tears, like just talking about the district, the level of care that that group has. So, again, it's hard when you can't put everybody on that committee. But I just want to reiterate, it's very representative, and they're doing a great job of representing the voices that they heard and not just their own. And then, just some important dates to remember. February 3rd, coming right up around the corner, we have professional development next Monday, and then the 17th, we're closed for holiday. Talked about the kindergarten kickoff, so we have one tomorrow at 6:00 at Lincoln, and the following day, Wednesday at Capoja. And then, the following week, we've got the PTA meeting at Capoja, and then on the 10th, the PTA meeting at Lincoln. At the secondary, it's Sproulak Week coming up, so we get to have some fun spirit going on. I'm sorry, that's this week. I got to get over there. I didn't tell I didn't make it there today. I'm excited to see what they're doing. And then the dance coming up, band concerts on the 11th and 13th. As a reminder, we did bring in fifth grade band as part of the referendum passing, and so excited to see that continue to grow and build interest. And then, choir concert, a great choir director who's going to have a choir concert on the 20th. And then, lots of great athletics and activities going on. We've got Show Choir Sweethearts Dinner on February 15th. As always, you can find our materials on our website to track the great work of the board. All of the board's contact information is always available. I know sometimes people want to get connected with our board. Please, they're always eager to answer questions and get connected with our community, as am I. So, thank you for some time to see the great things going on around the district.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Zambrino. All right, we're going to move to Section 4, Consent Items. I am looking for a motion to approve the consent items on tonight's agenda, which include financial claims, bills payable, and staffing as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries. Now, we move to Policy Review. This evening, we have a series of policies on our agenda for review. These policies were initially reviewed by the Board Policy Committee on December 2nd, 2024. They were discussed again with the entire board at the December 9th Business Meeting and are now on their third and final reading. They are up for approval. District policies play a critical role in the governance work of our school board. All district policies are available on our website under the About Us tab located under the School Board section under SSPPS Policies. I would like to note, if you kept your agenda from December, that Policy 522 is not on this list. It had been originally scheduled to be reviewed, but due to recent statute changes, it is being pulled because we need to review it again. All right. At this time, I'm seeking motion to approve the policies listed on our agenda this evening, Policy 516, 513, 607, 614, 626, 418, 419, 437, and 722. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Do we have any discussion or questions regarding policy?
Yes.
Madam Chair, there are a number of the policies that deal with educational practices and teachers and assessment and working with nurses. And I just wanted to thank Dr. Burkhart and Dr. Winter and Dr. Zambrino and others from our senior leadership team that really did a job making some outreach to people who are administering those programs in the front lines to really get their perspective as these policies were brought together. And that's noticed and appreciated, and it provides a whole lot of confidence to me about the policies that are coming before the board tonight. So, I wanted to thank the leadership for their work in that.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? I'm going to say thank you, Director Cummings. It's always good to remember that these policies aren't just coming out of thin air, but we've got people behind the scenes working to make sure that they are going to be what fits best for our community and our district. And so, it's the culmination of lots of work. And I am looking for all those in favor to say aye.
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 All right, opposed? Motion carries. All right, business items. Moving on to our business items. We have three business items before us for approval this evening. The first item is the approval to schedule a special board session on Monday, February 3rd at 5:00 PM at the district office. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We will be meeting on Monday as a board retreat. We will be getting some further leadership training from Ray Queener, who works with Teamworks, who provides the board extra education, training opportunities, especially as we're reforming as a new board with our new members. It's an opportunity for us to kind of baseline what we're talking about and the information and how we're working and seeing together. So, it's a great opportunity for us. Do we have to vote on that?
Yes.
Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next up, I'm looking for a motion for the approval of the Acceptance of Gifts report. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. I would like to welcome up and introduce our new Finance Director. Rod Chaff is here to share with us what the donation before us tonight is.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. I want to take this time to thank the Packer family for hiring me as the new Finance Director here. So, I'm happily and humble and honored to be here. Tonight's business item here is seeking the full board's approval for the acceptance of gift. We have a very humble but anonymous individual that donated $5,000 to the girls' softball team, and it is earmarked for uniform. A little bit of background about this, this person who donated $5,000 instead of going the fundraising route, and there's nothing wrong with fundraising, decided to donate $5,000 in essence of time for the girls' softball team. So, I just want to acknowledge this and thank this community and thank this person for donating to our Packer family.
Thank you, Rod. And thank you to our anonymous donor with a generous gift. I'm excited to see what the softball players come out. All those in favor of accepting our gift, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you, Director Chaff.
Yeah.
Lastly, I am looking for approval for the Joint Powers Agreement between Dakota County and South St. Paul Public Schools for the opioid settlement funds. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Zambrino, can you share some deals, details regarding this, please?
Yes. And, you know, everyone, I think, is pretty aware of the opioid epidemic that's been plaguing really all of the United States, but has definitely hit Dakota County a little harder than some other places. And so, appreciative that the county did receive some settlement funds, opioid settlement funds, and then had the opportunity to redistribute some of those out to school districts. And so, we are asking you to accept the $5,000 stipend or grant, I guess, from them. And we can use those dollars to help with opioid prevention as well as things like the naloxone that we need to stock in our schools. So, for those who hadn't heard that, in the recent legislative changes, we are now required to have naloxone in our schools in the event that there's believed opioid overdose. And so, it's not a big expense, but it is an added expense that came our way, and so excited to be able to use these funds for that, but also for some of the preventive work. And so, I've been in contact with Jennifer Daniels, who's our Assistant Director under, Dr. Burkhart is working with the school-based teams, the social worker counselor psych folks to see what, like, how might they use that. So, if you all accept that, know that it will be in good hands with that team to kind of help us brainstorm how we might use that. And then, of course, our health services where we keep the naloxone as well. So.
Any discussion or questions for Dr. Zambrino regarding this? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. I think one of my favorite parts of the meeting, our Student School Board Representative Report. So, that concludes the business items. Now, we'll move on. First, we'll hear from our school board representative, Jackson Schultz. And I understand Amal is at a math meet tonight.
Be just me.
So, we wish her and the rest of the team lots of luck.
So, we were planning on having our climate and culture survey, the results today, but unfortunately, due to the school closure on Tuesday, last Tuesday, we weren't able to get the, run the survey. So, we'll have that at the next meeting, hopefully. This past month, we've been kind of going over registration and what that's going to look like. We've watched videos. We got this packet, and I'll dive into that more after, I'll talk about these. We had counselors who came and met with us in our classes. And after, at the end of the month, we're going to register. So, in this packet, we kind of got different, like pathways you can go on, and that's on page five, pathways you could go on in classes that will help you with those pathways. And then, later on, like on page nine, it talks about the requirements you need for graduation. Yeah, that's what this is for. It was very helpful for kind of seeing what you, what was available, for sure. Yeah. And this week, it's Sproulak Week. Today was Jersey Day. It's basically like a winter homecoming to recognize winter sports. And yeah, dodgeball's going on right now. A lot of people are excited about that. Tomorrow's Hat Day. It's just a fun week. And here are our activities for the next couple of weeks. If you want to see all of these or more, you can go to If you want to see all of these or more, you can go to the athletic and activities section at sspps.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackson.
Nice job.
Yeah, thank you. All right, our final agenda item this evening, our school board members will share updates either on committees they serve on or highlight any exciting educational activities or events they've participated in, just where are we seeing passion in our district? Director Weber, would you like to start?
Sure. First off, I just, this is the first time I'm seeing the high school registration. And to the many people, I'm sure that were involved in the design and organization, I mean, this looks phenomenal. So like, I hope all the high school, you know, people and even community members, because one of the things when I was talking to people this last fall, that I talked about was the Packer pathways, which is all listed out right here. Again, we want all of our students to be lifelong learners. And so whether that means they want to go into the trades, they want to go into IT, they want to become doctors, they want to become plumbers, whatever their path takes them, we can kind of outline this for them, starting in ninth grade. And I, I don't think I knew what I wanted to do when I was in ninth grade, but I mean, this is just the phenomenal amount of work. And so just really, really kudos to the people who put this together. Because I know that like the scheduling matrix is not one I understand, but one I'm happy that someone does, because it's lots of different moving, moving parts. So as Dr. Zambrino said earlier, we belong to an organization called Intermediate District 917, for which I am the board member. It's basically a full other board with nine representatives from the other nine, well, eight other school districts. We are the ninth, there are nine total different districts. And we had our organizing meeting last week, and Tom Bennett from Bloomington is our new chair. So congratulations to him. I know he's going to do a phenomenal job. I know that the South St. Paul One Act Play competition was last week, and I believe they are going on to the next level. Is that, that correct? So they, is that correct?
You know, I had not heard that yet. And I saw the kids and talked to them about their practicing right before, but I, we will find out and get that out.
Because I know that the subsection, their first level, so there are, there's acting competitions, because we can make competitions about anything in this country. So like different schools compete with their plays, and I believe we made it to the next level of competition. So that's very, very exciting for all of the wonderful thespians we have in our school. And other than that, I just hope everyone is able to stay warm and keep your, your thoughts and ideas coming.
Thank you, Director Weber. Director Cummings?
Well, I just, throughout the last month, it's really been mostly about learning, learning how to be on school board and, and all the things that you do. And so I almost feel like I know less things than I did at the beginning of this, but I hope that's a good thing. I, part of that is working within the Minnesota School Boards Association, many of their trainings that have been extremely helpful. I know that Director Felton has, has really talked about many of the ways that we can get involved in the school board association and many of the great trainings that there. So that has been very, very helpful. With, along with Chair Human, I was able to get a really baseline knowledge about community education. And boy, do they do fantastic work. Jean over at our community ed has really continued to make a better and better and better product for people in South St. Paul through adult basic education, adult enrichment, ECFE, senior programming, other types of community outreach, really does quite a fantastic job. And so I, I was able to go and watch you, Chair Human, is working within the community ed tri district work, and that has been honestly inspiring. So wanted to thank Superintendent Zambrino and Chair Human again for spending quite a bit of time with me throughout the last month to talk through just a number of issues that has been very, very helpful to learn more. We are at the beginning of the legislative session, and so know that, you know, we do have issues that need to go before the legislature this year, including problems with our compensatory aid formula, as well as our equalization formula, that trying to be creative about ways in which we can talk about that and create the, illustrate the problem that really exists there for many poor districts across the state, property poor districts, tax-based poor districts like South St. Paul. At the last school board meeting, I am now on the long-range planning and financing facilities. And so really looking to learn more about the condition of our facilities here and many of the needed improvements that need to be made. There are, there's lots to do. And there's lots to protect both of the history, but also creating a really compelling environment for students to learn all across our state. And I hope to be involved in more community events. I've been sort of at home recovering from a medical procedure, but I know tomorrow night, I hope to be at the women's basketball game, which I'm very excited about. And finally, I just wanted to say that nationally, it's a really exciting time for many people, but for other people, it's a really scary time. And so I just want to send a message out there that if you're feeling scared, or if you're feeling like I'm not welcome anymore, I just want you to know that in South St. Paul, you are, and that we're going to do everything that we can to ensure that you can show up as your full self to South St. Paul schools and be supported in those environments. So.
Thank you, Director Cummings. Vice Chair Claflin?
Thank you. I, I really have to echo and thank Director Cummings for those words. We want our schools to be safe places for all of our students. And I want to thank the administration and the teachers for the efforts that they've made to communicate what will happen with protocols and let students know that school is our, our priority, your safety at school, your ability to learn here, that's why we're all here. And I've also seen a passion within our elementary schools. We've heard a lot about high school activities, but the young kids are just as busy. Those teachers are pulling together all sorts of great enrichment programs for our kids. And there's some really fun stuff happening there with Lego leagues and geography clubs. There's minds in motion happening after school, and all the kids are having so much fun with this. They're learning guitar, they are excited to play math games, and just having the best time at school. And that's really what I love to see, kids loving school.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Director Duffy?
Yeah. Director Weber, to your point, I believe the One Act Play will perform in the section finals Wednesday at 4:40 at Eagan High School. So they did move on. But yeah, a couple of things, if you want to see some passion, I guarantee there's a lot of passion at that dodgeball tournament. As a former three-time champ of that, I can attest. That's a big deal for those kids. Jack, are you not on a team?
No, I'm not.
Okay, took the year off. But yeah, this past weekend, the South St. Paul wrestling team hosted a tournament, the Veldman Invitational. And it's, our wrestling room is named after Pete Veldman, a former administrator here in South St. Paul, a longstanding family. And really went off without a, without a hitch, a really well-run tournament. And if you've ever watched a wrestling meet, there's a lot of passion in the corners from the coaches. It's a really loud gymnasium. And seven mats, two in the cafeteria. I heard a lot of great things about our new cafeteria from kids from other schools. And then using one mat in our multipurpose room across from the comp gym. So a lot of fun and seeing that. And it looks like a really busy schedule in our athletics and activities department coming up this week. So hopefully we can get a lot of people there to support our youth.
Thank you. Director Felton?
Yes. I just want to have a short discussion about something that has been mentioned already a few times, that on Thursday, January 16th, the four of us, Kim, I, Ryan, and Dr. Zambrino, we all attended the MSBA conference in Minneapolis Convention Center. And it is a great opportunity for all of our members, our whole school district, to get some recognition. And as was already mentioned, of course, I want to do a huge thank you and congratulations to Kim for getting her leadership development certification. And if you are receiving any type of an award, your name is posted on the brochure. So the entire state of Minnesota sees your name and our school district posted accordingly if and when we receive an award. So that's, that's with that. And also, the other most exciting thing that we have, I know Ms. Borg is sitting in the back there, Leah Borg. She was invited to participate as an instructor in a session that us members can attend, because we can attend several different classes at the convention and we can pick our own. And of course, we attended this one with her. And this was called "A School and Public Health Perspective on the Connection Between Cell Phone Policies and Well-Being." Yeah, our middle school principal, Ms. Borg, was a major, major wonderful presenter. And even listing here, it includes South St. Paul Public School District. Our district name is included on there. And, and what this was, it says, "This session offers insights from a middle school principal," which is ours, Leah Borg, "which is about the phone-free school and public health experts to explore effective practices for implementing cell phone policies that promote student and staff well-being." So I want to thank and congratulate Ms. Borg for doing a class. She was invited with a couple other members that were there also attending. So for me, that was a true honor to, to be attending a class with one of our personal...
And the room was packed. She had...
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. It was, it was wonderful. So, all right, so thank you very much, and Happy New Year to everyone.
All right. I just feel like it's been like a fire hose of getting information and seeing amazing stuff happening in our district, that it's hard to like pinpoint what I want to share. But I did go to the One Act Festivals the other weekend, and I'm not surprised that our kids have moved to sections because I cried during it. So I'm just really pumped to see that. And that is the agenda. So I will hereby entertain a motion to adjourn the Monday, January 27th, 2025, school board meeting. And I'm looking for a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Monica. Second. Thank you. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The school board meeting is adjourned at 7:04 PM. Thank you.